Okay, thank you. And after this session, the next session is a group discussion that we flow into at 11:30. So keep that in mind. Just some unfinished business from Brother Henry's excellent remarks in the earlier session. That I thought of some cross references in the spirit of Brother Ryan. And so I just direct your attention, first of all, to John 5 and 36. John, chapter 5, verse 36. John 5:36. And the Lord Jesus there said, speaking to religious Jews at the pool, this is after he had healed the man at the pool of Bethesda. John 5:36, he says, "But I have a greater witness than John's. For the works which the Father has given me to finish, the very works that I do bear witness of me that the Father has sent me." That's John 5:36. Then over to chapter 10 of John, John 10 and 38, John 10:38. John 10:38. Actually, let's back up to 37. If I do not do, let's back up to 36, sorry. Okay. The Lord Jesus said, well, we'll start at 34. We'll go the whole Monty on context. John 10:34, "Jesus answered them, 'Is it not written in your law, I said, you are gods?'" "If he called them gods, to whom the word of God came, and the Scripture cannot be broken, do you say of him whom the Father sanctified and sent into the world, 'You are blaspheming? Because I said, I am the Son of God.'" Just a pause here. The Lord is saying that these people were basically throwing a fit, just hearing him say the word, "Son of God", you know, using that term. And they didn't think through the implications. And he's saying, "Listen, this phrase shouldn't put you around the bend, because God uses it in the Psalms, even to talk about people that were judges in the nation of Israel that God used and gave His word to." Okay, so enlightened that, verse 37. "If I do not do the works of my Father, do not believe me. But if I do, though you do not believe me, believe the works, that you may know and believe that the Father is in me and I in Him." So what are we talking about? We're talking about evidence, exactly what Brother Henry was bringing to us, that our faith is rooted in evidence. It is not blind faith. It is not a leap in the dark. It is not wishful thinking to the extreme. It is based on evidence, based on the works of the Lord Jesus. Now, in both of those contexts, he's talking to unbelievers. But if you go to John 14:11, the Lord Jesus says to the disciples, and these are the believing disciples. By this point, Judas Iscariot has gone out to betray him. And so the Lord had said of the other disciples in the previous chapter, "Ye are clean." Okay, so we know these are believers that he's speaking to in John 14:11. He says, "Believe me that I am in the Father, and the Father in me, or else believe me for the sake of the works themselves." So again, we see this principle that if your faith starts to get a bit wobbly, if the proposition declared by the word seems a little bit incredulous to you, like it's hard to believe, go back again and consider the works of the Lord Jesus Christ. And there are matter of historical record, just like John was pointing to the specific works that Isaiah said Messiah would do when he came, opening the eyes of the blind, and the deaf hearing, and the dumb speaking, and the poor having the gospel preached to them. We can look back in the historical record. We can't say that Muhammad did these miraculous works. We can't say Joseph Smith did them. We can't say Brigham Young did them, or Jim Jones, or David Perez, or any flavor of the weak cult leader that has come down the pike through history. But the Lord Jesus, we can say it's a matter of historical record, the greatest sign being the resurrection. And so we go back and we say, "We believe in the Lord Jesus, because he's risen from the dead." And so that's very important principle. Romans 10 is also a passage I thought was very germane here. Romans 10. "And speaking about the Jews, he said, 'They have a zeal,' verse 2, 'for God, but not according to knowledge.' Verse 3 says, "'For they, being ignorant of God's righteousness and seeking to establish their own righteousness, have not submitted to the righteousness of God; for Christ is the end of the law for righteousness to everyone who believes.'" So here's the key faith, right? "For Moses writes about the righteousness which is of the law; the man who does those things shall live by them. But the righteousness of faith speaks in this way: Do not say in your heart, 'Who will ascend into heaven, that is to bring Christ down from above?' Or, 'Who will descend into the abyss, that is to bring Christ up from the dead?' But what does it say? The word is near you in your mouth and in your heart." That is the word of faith which we preach. "That if you confess with your mouth the Lord Jesus, and believe in your heart that God has raised him from the dead, you will be saved. For with the heart one believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation; for the Scripture says, Whoever believes on him will not be put to shame. But there's no distinction between Jew and Greek, for the same Lord over all is rich to all who call upon him; for whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved. How then shall they call on him on whom they have not believed? How shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? How shall they hear without a preacher? And how shall they preach unless they are sent, as it is written? How beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of free, of peace, who bring glad tidings, of good things! But they have not all obeyed the gospel." We'll notice this in Hebrews, by the way, that faith and obedience are corresponding truths, two sides of the same coin. To believe God is to obey God. To obey God is to believe God. Okay, we'll see that more as we go through Hebrews. "For Isaiah says, 'Lord, who has believed our report? So then faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the word of God, and so forth.'" You could even go on in the next new verses there. And then finally, 1 John 5. Henry referred to this scripture at the end of his message. 1 John, chapter 5, and verse 4. "For whatever is born of God overcomes the world, and this is the victory that has overcome the world, our faith. Who is he who overcomes the world, but he who believes that Jesus is the Son of God?" So this is what Hebrews is going to be hammering home to us all over and over again. Look at the Lord Jesus, believe on the Lord Jesus. And if you have trouble and get a little bit wobbly, remind yourself afresh of the work of the Lord Jesus, which is meant to build and augment our faith, and show us that our faith has not been misplaced. As Hebrews 11 is going to tell us, I think it's verse 6. "For he that cometh unto him must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him." So our faith is not misplaced. It's definitely in the right person, the Lord Jesus. And we live in an age of doubt. We live in an age when even in what passes for Christianity, people kind of celebrate doubt in certain quarters. And they say, "Well, it's good to sort of not be so sure." The Bible doesn't say that. The Bible tells us honestly that even the best of men, like John the Baptist, doubted. But what did they do when they doubted? They took their doubt to the Lord Jesus. They went to Christ. They had their faith built up by the Lord. And so that's what we need to do as well. That's what the Hebrews needed to do. We'll certainly give you space to comment on these things more as we go. Now, let's return to Hebrews 1. Yeah, group discussions coming up next.
11:30, right?
Yeah, yeah. So Hebrews 1, but if you want to say something.
No, 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 no.
All right. Hebrews 1, and verse 5. Is resuming the contrast with the angels. Now, I don't want to spend too much time on the seven scriptures here, because we could camp out on them for several messages. We really could. Because it's a point that many have made. David Gooding says it well in his commentary in Unshakable Kingdom. That is not just the quotations that are important. They are important in and of themselves. But he's not just proof texting. The context of the quotation is equally important. And I'll show you what I mean as we go through that. Now, verse 5, Hebrews 1:5. "To which of the angels did he ever say, 'You are my son; today I have forgotten you.'" That's scripture number one. Let's back in Psalm 2, okay, Psalm 2. Now, when you read Psalm 2, the context is that's an enthronement psalm. The Lord Jesus was always and ever the eternal Son of God. Some brothers have come and not understanding the context here. They've tried to teach that at some point, Jesus became the Son. In other words, they believe in the one we know as the Son of God, as being eternal, the second person of the Trinity. But he wasn't Son, they'll teach, till the incarnation, or until he was raised from the dead, or something like that. That is not what this is saying. We know that the Lord Jesus is the Son. Verse 2 tells us that he has spoken in Son. This is what the Lord was from all eternity past. He's always been the Son. Just like the Father's always been the Father, and the Holy Spirit's always been the Holy Spirit. But when he says, "You are my son; today I have forgotten you," it would be understood that putting this Son on the throne, as Psalm 2 is talking about, that is, you're giving him a position now as the Son ruling over the kingdom. And we don't use the word "Son" this way typically in our culture. We tend to think of a child and a son as synonymous, you know, that a son is just a male child. So when my son was born in July, nine years ago, then I had a son. That's what we say. It's a boy. I had a son. But even in the wording in the New Testament, the Romans had the idea that you were born a child, and that at a certain point, you were adopted. You were placed as a son. In other words, you were, they actually had a ceremony you'd go through where you put on a new garment. And this said, you were maturing to the point where now you were expected to behave responsibly as a son. It would give you something called the Toga Virilis, to show that you were now a responsible member of the family. We know the Jews, even to this day, celebrate the Bar Mitzvah, where you become Bar Mitzvah means "Son of the Commandment." Now, you're viewed as being responsible to act according to their religion, and so forth and so on. Psalm 2 has a similar idea, that the son placing doesn't mean that the king obviously was born that day, physically generated that day, nor does it mean that he wasn't a male child before, or even a son before. But now he's invested with the royal rights that the son would have there. And he's said to be Son in a way that's never been said to any angel. An angel is just a messenger, after all. The word in New Testament, or the word in Old Testament, each mean messenger. And so Psalm 2 says, "You are my son; today I have forgotten you." He's putting him on the throne. Now, Psalm 2 also tells us, as you study the context, that the nations rage, and the people imagine a vain thing. That the kings of the earth set themselves, and they opposed the Lord and his Christ. In other words, they're not going to submit to his regime. They say, "We don't want him to reign over us." They say, "We'll cast his cords from us," in Psalm 2. "And yet he who sits in the heavens laughs, because this kingdom is going to be established." Now, interestingly, in Acts, chapter 4, this scripture is quoted. It's quoted in Acts 13 as well, when Paul was preaching in the synagogue of Caesidion, Antioch. He quotes this Psalm and uses the resurrection, talks about the resurrection of Christ. And similarly, in Acts 4, when there's this prayer meeting where Peter and John are released after their trial before the Sanhedrin, and being beaten and so forth. They go and they have this prayer meeting, and they praise the Lord, and they say, "Lord, this is just exactly what your word says. Why did the heathen rage, and the people imagine that, or the nations rage, and the people imagine a vain thing?" This is what the nations did. They set themselves against the Lord and his Christ. When did they do that? They go on to say in the prayer, "Because truly against your servant Jesus, Pontius Pilate, and Herod, and the rulers of the Jews, and all the people, set themselves against Christ." But now this is the Christ who's been crucified and raised up. So the king that God is putting on his throne is put in the position as Son by resurrection that an angel has never experienced. He's going to rule and reign until he has put all enemies under his feet. Now, we've already heard, the next quotation in verse 5 comes from 2 Samuel 7:14. It's the Davidic covenant. It's where David wanted to build a house for God, and God, using a marvelous double sense of a word, double entendre, that God says, "You're not going to build a house for me, David. I'm going to build a house for you." And he didn't mean the kind with bricks and mortar and wood. He meant a dynasty. And what's more, there's going to be a particular seed, a particular descendant, who is going to sit on that throne and rule and reign forever. And he says, "I will be to him a father, and he shall be to me a son." So the Messiah who's coming to rule, as we've already heard from Matthew 12, but there's a number of other places where the term is used, he is said to be Son of David. By the way, notice how important that is even to Christian writers in the New Testament. Matthew 1 begins giving us a genealogy that connects the Lord Jesus to be Son of Abraham and Son of David. And we'll see these ideas again in Hebrews. Hebrews 2 tells us he doesn't give aid to angels, but he takes on him seed of Abraham. So those promises that covenant made to Abraham still in force, and it was speaking ultimately of the work that the Lord Jesus would do. Same thing, the Davidic covenant, still in force. It speaks of what the Lord Jesus is going to do. And the Lord Jesus is going to fulfill every aspect of that. Now, verse 6, he brings in another scripture here that he says, quoting from, some say, Deuteronomy 32:43. But David Gooding points out, it's more likely Psalm 97:7, which was in the Septuagint, and Deuteronomy 32:43 in the Septuagint imported that phrase from Psalm 97, verse 7. So Gooding argues that Psalm 97 is the original scripture. Bearing that in mind, the context is that as he's brought to rule over the world, even the angelic hosts are to worship him. Now, you know, there are times in the Bible when people want to fall down and worship an angel, and they are forbidden to do so. Or even John, when he's being shown around, you know, this vision of heaven he's having, and vision of what's to come in Revelation. He falls down, and then the tour guide, the messenger says, "See that you do it not. I'm one of your fellow servants." So we are never to worship a creature. Worship is the unique prerogative of God. And that's how the word is consistently used in Scripture. It's what we give to God, being taken up with God, His worth, His excellence. And the angels are actually commanded to worship him. But the angels, by contrast, the next quotation, verse 7, from Psalm 104. "He makes his angels spirits, and his ministers a flame of fire." So are they impressive? Yes, they're spiritual beings, which means they have their domain and their interaction in a world that is largely invisible to us. And people can be fascinated by angels and spirits. And we heard last night, Colossians 2. This was the danger that people were teaching the worship of angels, and being overoccupied with angels. And he says, "No, as impressive as they are, they're just servants. They're ministers or servants." But the Son, by contrast, in verse 8, he's going to quote Psalm 45 now. And he's going to say, "Your throne of God is forever and ever. A scepter of righteousness is the scepter of your kingdom. You've loved righteousness and hated lawlessness; therefore God, your God, has anointed you with the oil of gladness more than your companions." Now, we're not only told here that this one who's going to sit on the throne is God. He's directly addressed as God. And the Lord never said that to the angels, okay? When he says to them that they're Elohim in certain of the Psalms, we should think that this is like how theologians in the English language, at one stage in Elizabethan English at least, were referred to as divines. They were not referred to as divines, because the people thought they were divine, that they were God, in other words. They were referred to as divines, because they were supposed to be people that spoke and wrote about things that are divine. In other words, the holy scriptures given by God. So when you look in your King James Bible, in some printed editions anyway, and it says, "The revelation of Saint John the Divine," it's not saying, the King James translators weren't saying, "We think John is God." It's saying, "We think John is a theologian. We think John is someone who wrote and spoke about God." Now, I think it's a very confusing term, so I never use it to describe a Bible teacher or anybody that's trying to speak about divine things. Because when you say someone's divine, they automatically think you're saying they are deity. So it's one of those English words that the meaning has changed a bit in some of its usage, and so we shouldn't use it anymore. But one thing's for sure, the Bible never calls mere angels God. I know the angel of the Lord is a special category. That's probably a pre-incarnate appearance of the Lord Jesus Christ, a Christophany, if you will. But that being said, the garden variety angels, be they archangels like Michael or Gabriel, people that are very impressive, creatures that are very impressive in power and glory, and spiritual beings are nonetheless never called God, but the Lord Jesus here is called God. Now, notice what his kingdom's going to be like, according to this quotation in Psalm 45. His throne is forever and ever. So the kingdoms of this world, they pass away, right? Kingdoms rise, and then they fall. But there's a time coming, I believe it's Revelation 11, that tells us of the time when it'll be said, "The kingdoms of this world have become the kingdom of our God and his Christ." That's an everlasting kingdom. That's an eternal kingdom. It's never going to pass away. And this throne, the seat of government of that kingdom, is never going to pass away. It's forever and ever. The scepter, which is the symbol of the throne, is a scepter of righteousness. So imagine a kingdom that really stands for truth and justice, not truth, justice, and the American way. Because sadly, in our country, we've often, and still do, pervert truth and pervert justice. Thank God for whatever justice there is by his providence. But no nation of the world today, no government that ever has been, or exists today, or ever shall be under man, can say that their scepter is one of perfect righteousness. But his kingdom is, because he personally loves righteousness and hates lawlessness. He always loved what he should, and always hated what he should not. We often do the reverse, right? The things we ought not to love, we love. And the things we hate are things that we should love. And the Lord, as part of being saved, and the ongoing work of salvation in our lives, sanctification, as the Lord applies that salvation and develops our hearts, and we'll see later in Hebrews 8, the new covenant, that part of it is writing his law on our minds and hearts. In other words, reprogramming us for UIT guys. You know, we get a new operating system that's brand new. And the apps we're now running, spiritually speaking, are for the glory of God. They're loving righteousness and hating lawlessness, just like our Lord did. And what's more, he's been marked out by God himself. Therefore, God, your God. And we remember that although the Lord Jesus is fully God, co-equal with Father and Spirit, that the Lord Jesus submitted to his Father, and always lived as a dependent man honoring God. So he's called your God. "He has anointed you with the oil of gladness more than your companions." We remember that those who are anointed in the Old Testament are prophets, priests, or kings. That's how you're marked out for office. And Hebrews is going to tell us that the Lord Jesus is all three of those things. Here, we're looking at his kingship, and it's God who selected him to be the king. And he's been anointed with the oil of gladness. But it speaks about his companions. And we'll also see that, especially in chapter 2, that this king isn't going to reign over a barren kingdom. He's not going to reign over an empty regime. He has people ruling and reigning with him. Redeemed people, many sons to glory, are the ones whom he is bringing to rule and reign with him. Then in verse 10, he's going to quote Psalm 102. "You, Lord, in the beginning laid the foundation of the earth, and the heavens are the work of your hands. They will perish, but you remain, and they will grow old like a garment, like a cloak. You'll fold them up, and they will be changed, and you are the same, and your years will not fail." Now, again, at the level of just what these verses say, is very interesting to see here, again, that the Lord's creatorial work is reaffirmed, that the Lord is the Creator. He laid the foundation of the earth, and the heavens are the work of his hands. These things, however, are transient. They are mutable. In fact, they have a planned lifespan. You know that phrase that all of us consumers hate, planned obsolescence? Well, there's a certain planned obsolescence to this world on account of sin. God's not going to let it go on in its broken and corrupt state forever. God is going to fix it, as Brother Henry's been telling us, and it's going to happen under our Lord Jesus. "They will perish, but you remain." So we have the great immutability of the Lord Jesus, that he remains. One of our hymn writers says, "I change; he changes not. The Christ can never die. His love not mine, the resting place; his truth not mine, the time." Aren't we glad of that? That our salvation depends on one who doesn't change? Hebrews 13 will tell us, in fact, that he is the same, that he says, "Yesterday, today, forever, Jesus Christ is the same." So we have this wonderful immutable Savior. And he's going to take this old decrepit creation and fold it up like somebody folds up an old cloak, and they'll be changed. So there's a better world to come in, as the old psalm says. "New creation is coming, new heavens and new earth, wherein wells righteousness." But he is the same, and his years will not fail. So we'll never need to replace this king, this Messiah king, who is man, who is son of David, is also a son of God, is also God, and he will never need to be replaced. He shall never fail. Now, at the level of what's quoted there from Psalm 102, that's very interesting. When you go back and look at the context again, you get the whole program of God. And I'll let you look at this on your own time. But Psalm 102 talks about basically looking at mankind and all their failure, looking at all the wrong that goes on in this world. And the Psalmist even asking the very question that Brother Henry was bringing out from John the Baptist. "Is there something going to be done about evil? Is there ever going to be justice on the earth?" And Psalm 2 says, "Oh, absolutely, there will be." How do we know? Well, you, oh, Lord. He starts talking to Messiah. And it's a little bit hard to pick it out, just reading it in our English translation of Psalm 102. But the Greek translation, the Septuagint, Brother Wilbur has a copy on his desk of the New English translation of the Septuagint. So if you want to look at it, you can. But they understood it was talking to Messiah. And here, the writer of Hebrews, by inspiration in the spirit of God likewise, says, "This is talking about Messiah. He's the Creator, and God does have a plan for this world. And whereas it's gone wrong, he's going to fold it up and change it, replace it with something that will be a new creation. But he himself is unchanging, and his years will never fail." Now, contrast that with verse 13. "To which of the angels has he ever said, 'Sit at my right hand till I make your enemies your footstool.'" And you're going to see that Psalm over and over again, alluded to, or directly quoted in the book of Hebrews. In fact, we already saw it back at the beginning of the chapter last night, when he says that he has sat down, sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high in verse 3. That's already an illusion. When you talk about sitting on the right hand, again, the Jewish mind would have gone to that scripture, to that Psalm. And here he quotes it. Did the Lord ever say that? Did God ever say that? To that scripture, to that Psalm. And here he quotes it. Did the Lord ever say that? Did God ever say that? To an angel, sit at my right hand till I make your enemies your footstool? Well, angels are gonna be used in judgment. Revelation makes that clear. And they have already in history. They were sent to Saba. To bring out Lot and his family. They were, uh, used of the Lord to judge the Assyrian army. The angel of the Lord itself came and killed a hundred and eighty-five thousand Assyrians. And they've been used at different times like that. And Revelation talks about the angels. Being sent to gather the Lord's elect from the four winds. And also the angels being involved in pouring out the wrath of God. The Lord refers to that as well in the Olivet Discourse of Matthew twenty-four and twenty-five. But it's never said to them, you're gonna sit at the right hand of God the Father. You're gonna sit. In the highest place of authority and power and work out the judgment of God and bring his purposes. Where all the enemies are subdued on your feet. Never said that of them. They are not, are they not all ministering spirits, he says, sent forth to minister to those. Who will inherit salvation. So angels, are they impressive? Absolutely. But hey, guess what? They work for me. They work for you, if you know the Lord Jesus Christ. I know ultimately, they work for the Lord. But the Lord has apportioned them the duty of serving us, of being involved. In helping us in ways that I'm sure we don't even realize as yet. But the little that the Bible tells us. Of how God uses his angels. We think even of how the Lord Jesus in his manhood on earth. Uh, was strengthened by angels sometimes. After the temptation, in Matthew four, they came to him and ministered to him. In a time of great physical, uh, weakness and emotional weakness. And also at Gethsemane, we remember that again. But singularly, we recall that although the Lord could have called on more than twelve legions of angels. To deliver him from the cross, the Lord would not call on these ministering spirits to do that. The Lord would bear the burden to Calvary and suffer and die alone, as the hymn writer put it. Now that flows directly into our first warning passage of Hebrews. That is so very important. One of your handouts shows the warning passages of Hebrews. You can peruse that at your own leisure. I don't have it in front of me now anyway. But Hebrews two, verse one, therefore we must give the more earnest heed. To the things we've heard lest we drift away, or some translate it lest we let them slip. For if the words spoken through angels prove steadfast, and every transgression and disobedience. Received a just reward, how shall we escape if we neglect? So great a salvation, which at the first began to be spoken by the Lord. And was confirmed to us by those who heard him. God also bearing witness, both with signs and wonders. With various miracles and by gifts of the Holy Spirit according to his own will. Now if I forget, make sure we get back to your question, Brother Paul. Brother Paul asked Henry about. Signs and wonders and the people that would ask us for signs and wonders today. To authenticate the Lord Jesus and his ministry. And here, signs and wonders are referred to. So. They have their place in redemptive history, uh, but not in the way that many people would try to tell us today. In any case, we have this first warning. What's the warning? Well. We could drift away. It's a word used in classical Greek of a ship missing a harbor. Now that can be a very bad thing. You know, I saw not too long ago, a documentary about the Staten Island Ferry. I always try to bring a little local history in for you. So many of you coming from the greater New York area probably remember. That the Staten Island Ferry missed the slip that it was supposed to come into. And they crashed and there was terrible destruction and some loss of life and dear people that were injured. It's a very serious thing. When a ship misses its mooring or misses where it's to park, right? It, it's a very grave thing. And he uses that metaphor to say, you know, we could drift away. If we're not careful, if we're getting wobbly, if we're in danger of wavering. We've gotta come back and give more earnest heed. We've gotta pay attention. Now, all we human beings are like currents, whether you talk about water current or electrical current. As I understand it, current follows the path of least resistance, right? And we're naturally that way. We like it easy, okay? Uh, I'm a very Lionel Richie type brother. I'm easy like Sunday morning. You know, I just, I say, I don't wanna work hard. I wanna work smart. I wanna have a time-saving device. I wanna do it the easy way. Well, the thing about salvation is it's hard. It's hard. Now, it's the work of the Lord from first to last. And a work that we don't contribute to. We can't save ourselves. We are not saved. Uh, by any of our merit. It's not of works of righteousness which we have done. But according to his mercy, he saves us, Titus three tells us. Not of works lest any man should boast, Ephesians two says. And we know that. And yet it requires a response, doesn't it? It requires faith, as we've heard. And faith can be difficult. We've gotta pay attention. We're not gonna drift into salvation. And the problem is that there were people that had kind of maybe drifted into the meeting. And heard it, and the speaker was so impassioned and they were moved emotionally. Or they saw other people coming forward, or they saw people crying, and the next thing you know. The waterworks turns on with them and they say, I want some of that too. I wanna come to Jesus. And didn't really fully sit down and do what the Lord Jesus said to do, to count the cost. And that the Lord Jesus is talking about not just sort of ticking another box. On the form of our life, like, you know, I'm a Pennsylvanian and I'm an adult and I'm. Middle-aged and I'm Generation X and whatever boxes we could, you know, check about our identity. Oh yes, I'm a Christian. No, we're talking about the end of my old life. That that was crucified with Christ. It was executed. That God said, there was nothing about my life apart with him, that he can patch up and take forward. That I need a brand new life. As the Lord Jesus said in John three, ye must be born again. As Titus three speaks to us about regeneration. We need a brand new life, and that's what salvation is. And it's a transformation. If any man be in Christ, he is a new creature. Old things have passed away. Behold, all things have become new, second Corinthians five seven tells us. So he says. Now consider this, you've gotta pay attention to this. Why? Because if the words spoken through angels, verse two, prove steadfast. And every transgression and disobedience received a just reward, how shall we escape if we neglect so great a salvation? Now he's comparing the words that angels gave. Did those words come to pass? Well, you think about Sodom and Gomorrah, God sending angels in. And saying a lot in his family, you know, this city's gonna be destroyed. We've gotta get you out of here. Who do you have in this place? Get them. Let's go. Did, were Sodom and Gomorrah destroyed? Well, it became proverbial. The Lord would refer back to them to talk about. Tremendous wrathful destruction under God's righteous judgment. But I think there's even more to it than just that. Yes, the individual angelic messages that. Were sent through the ages, the things that Daniel was told, or the things that Zacharias was told in Luke one by an angel. Or that Mary was told. Yes, all those things came to pass. But when he talks about. Every transgression and disobedience received a just reward. In other words. There was a just recompense. There was a fair penalty. Nobody got away with it. Under this word that was delivered by angels. What word is he talking about specifically? Well, here again, we will give our nod to Brother Ryan and we'll go to Acts chapter seven for a cross-reference again. To Stephen's message here. Acts chapter seven and verse fifty-three, I believe it is. Act seven fifty-three. But we're gonna back up by way of context for verse fifty-one. Act seven fifty-one. You stiff-necked and uncircumcised and hardened ears, you always resist the Holy Spirit. As your fathers did, so do you. Which of the prophets did your fathers not persecute? And they killed those who foretold the coming of the just one. Of whom now you have become the betrayers and murderers. Now, we saw that last night. You see, it's not having the oracles of God. It's not having the Bible that saves somebody, is it? There are plenty of people that have the Bible on their shelf or keep it on their desk at work, or even read it every day. But you have to have faith in what the Bible says. You have to believe what it says. He says, verse fifty-three, this is our key cross-reference here. Who have received the law by the direction of angels and have not kept it. Go again, please, to Galatians three. Galatians three. Galatians three and verse nineteen. What purpose then does the law serve? This is Galatians three nineteen. What purpose then? Does the law serve? It was added because of transgressions till the seed should come to whom the promise was made. Notice this, and it was appointed through angels by the hands of a mediator. So in a way that Exodus doesn't directly tell us, but that perhaps was implied in the Old Testament. We find that the New Testament explicitly tells us, God gave the law to Moses through angels. That in whatever way that was transmitted by God writing it on those tablets of stone. Angels were involved in that process. So they would look back to angels. And out of all the wonderful, amazing things that angels did in the Old Testament, they could say, you know, the biggest thing is. God gave us the law through the hands of the angels, through Moses. And we'll see next, when we get to chapter three, that the Lord Jesus is compared to Moses as well. Now remember, Hebrews is telling us, the Lord Jesus is better. He is superior. And we can infer from this, he's superior to the law even. And superior, as we'll see in chapter three, to Moses. So when he tells us in Hebrews two, we ought to take earnest heed to this. We ought to pay attention to this. Don't let this slip or don't drift away from this. Because that law that was given by the angels, you better believe. That people are going to be judged out of that law. The Lord Jesus said so in John chapter five. The Lord Jesus said that they trusted in Moses, but it was that very law that was condemning them. Because Moses spoke of the Lord Jesus and they weren't believing in the Lord Jesus. And that law is gonna be brought forth to show them, no, you did know God's standard. You did know God's truth. But you're going to be judged for it. Well, how much more? If God has now spoken through his son and you've not listened to this. I mean, if I go to, uh, one of those mini, um, sorry, mini go-kart tracks. And they give me some rules of the road for the mini go-kart track. You must wear your seatbelt. You know, thou shalt not run other mini golf carts off the road and all that kind of thing. This might be a stretch for some of you to grasp, but you're not allowed to do that on those mini go-kart tracks, right? And then I go out on the interstate highway and I say, well, I'm not allowed to run people off the road on the mini go-kart track. But now that I'm out on the interstate, hey, it's open season. Now again, coming from some places, you might almost think that that's permissible, but technically it's against the law, isn't it? And if you can't run somebody off the road on the mini go-kart track, how much more on the interstate? Same principle here. If breaking the law that God gave through angels to you is gonna result in. That transgression being held against you and you suffering the judgment of God, how much more what he said through his son? And so this is like a strong warning. How shall we escape if we neglect so great a salvation? Which at the first began to be spoken by the Lord and was confirmed to us by those who heard him. Now this is why. Some people say Paul wasn't, uh, the writer of Hebrews. Cause he had direct interaction with the risen Christ and seems to be implied here that the writer of Hebrews. Was handed on this information by other people. I won't go down that road. I just throw it out there for. Uh, your consideration. But the thing is, there's confirmation of the word. God also bearing witness, both with signs and wonders, with various miracles. And gifts of the Holy Spirit according to his own will. So the word is given. And God doesn't just say, well, you have to take it on my say-so. God gives the evidence. Of the miracles, the works of power, which are called signs, because a sign points to something. I was glad. Coming down the street when I saw the sign, Heimbusch Bible Camp. I thought I'm in the right place. And the signs, that's John's favorite word for miracles, they point to Messiah. These are written. That you may know that, that you may believe rather, that Jesus is the Christ, the son of God. And that believing you might have life through his name, as John twenty tells us. It's also, of course, wonders, because they produce astonishment in those who saw them. These weren't things that could be explained away naturally and physiologically. And various miracles, those are the works of power and gifts of the Holy Spirit according to his own will. So God. Has authenticated his word through the signs and wonders and various miracles. Just like we heard with John the Baptist, if you're struggling with the preaching, with the word. Look at the miracles that authenticate that word. It's not just that. Jesus was saying, I'm Messiah, I'm Lord, worship me. He's got the walk and the actions. And even the signed miracles to back it up. Now, when we hear people talking about signs and wonders today, first of all. They're usually gratuitous works of power. They're usually things that people are astonished by. But they're not like the works that the Lord Jesus did. The Lord Jesus, when he did signs, they were tied to the word. For example. He preaches about himself being the bread come down from God that a man may eat of and not die. That is preceded by the miracle, the sign of him multiplying the loaves. That's not accidental. The Lord says, you know what? You just saw me do at a physical level. How much more can I do it at a spiritual level? That if you come, yeah, you come and you seek a free lunch, you seek me not because you saw the sign, he said. But because you ate the loaves and were filled. But if you wanna come to me as the bread of life, you can eat of me and not die. You can take in me as your spiritual sustenance, your spiritual food, and that will give you eternal life. And the sign was meant to point to that fact. Now today, the sign is meant to usually aggrandize. A certain sign worker, a certain miracle worker, to draw people after a man or a woman. To fill the coffers of an organization, to just arbitrarily do something miraculous. I have a friend in another country, I won't say where or whom, but he has a business importing things for other people. And there was one of these world famous sign workers coming to his country. Someone who, if we said his name, he would be probably, uh, you would probably know who I'm talking about. And a week or two before this man came to this country for his campaign. They shipped in a tractor trailer load of wheelchairs, crutches and canes. Now that was not to go to the local Easter seal society and distribute to people that were lame. That was for use. In the meetings, to put people in wheelchairs who didn't come to the meeting in a wheelchair, because frankly, they didn't need a wheelchair. To give people a crutch or a cane at that meeting who didn't need a crutch or a cane. So they could throw it across the stage when this person put his empty hand on their somewhat empty head. And what that is, is chicanery. These are charlatans. These are frauds. These are people that are deceiving. As some people say, particularly in parts of Africa and. South America and other parts of the world where there's a lot of witchcraft and sorcery. They'll talk about supernatural phenomena that defy a natural explanation. Well, I just say. That the Bible's quite clear that Satan and the demons have power. They can do things. But when you test the spirits, as first John four tells us to, test the spirits whether they are of God. Not in the sense of test them like the old Coke or Pepsi challenge. Do you remember that? Where you try one, you do a blind taste test and you decide whether you like Coke better or Pepsi better. That's not the idea. You don't go out and try a demon to see if he has real power, if he's any good. No, you test them by the word of God. You test them by the genuine article. Like I'm told, the Secret Service is not trained as much in paying attention to what the counterfeit looks like, as they are trained in knowing the genuine article and knowing all the things that are true of legal tender. So that if they look at George Washington and he has a goatee, they know something's wrong here. Because the real McCoy, so to speak, the genuine article, doesn't have that. They can spot the counterfeit. Now, God has already borne witness by signs and miracles to us through the Lord Jesus. And now that the Bible is written, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We look at the scriptures, and they tell us about the Lord Jesus doing things that others could not do. That he could heal the lame, that he could cleanse the leper, that he could give sight to the blind, hear unto the deaf, speech to the mute, and even raise the dead. But that was not the primary focus of our Lord when he was on earth. That was not the main reason for his mission here. Nor is it the will of God that we live forever in these bodies or live forever in this world. We've just read in chapter 1 that these things are going to be changed. So does God have the power to heal today? Absolutely. Can God do supernatural things? Absolutely. Does he sometimes do them? I have no doubt. But is it the normative thing that he does? No, the normal thing is he's sending his word right around the world today, and he's changing people. As they believe on that word, they are transformed. They move from death unto life, which is more impressive than restoring a physically dead person back to physical life. Because those people died again. You haven't run into Lazarus over at Stu Leonard's lately, have you? Or Jairus's daughter down at the gas station? They're not walking around the earth anymore. These were resuscitations. They were restored to the physical life they had before. But when we talk about resurrection, what happens to us at conversion, when we pass from death into life, is a preview of what's going to happen in the future. It's already the beginning of our salvation. We're already enjoying it. But we're not enjoying it as fully as we will, because the day's coming. What Romans 8 calls, sorry, I'll try not to break the equipment. What Romans 8 calls the redemption of the body. What Philippians 3 describes as these bodies of humiliation being transformed into glorious bodies like unto his body. And we really await the coming of our Lord for the full bringing in of all the implications of salvation. So having heard the law and knowing that they must obey the law, they're exhorted. Don't ignore the word of the Son, because it's obviously more important. And it's even been authenticated in your own time and in their own experience by people who perform miracles and by the gifts of the Holy Spirit. And we'll read about people that had even experienced some of those things in Hebrews 6, and yet were in danger perhaps of turning away. So I hope that answers the question or gives some semblance of an answer. And as we go into discussion time, others, excuse me, other brethren could add to that and clarify that better than I have. Now, that's all I have to say on this section. We'll move on by and by.